All right, good morning, everyone. It's 9:00 a.m. Let's begin with a prayer and a pledge of allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today, Lord, just pray you'll guide each and every one of us today as we do your county business, Lord, and be with all our first responders in the county, be with each one who's sick, Lord, with the virus as we try to overcome this, Lord, across the nation, be with decision makers today in our nation, Lord, and bless them, and make sure everything works out good for our business today, Lord, just give us your guidance we need. All these things we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
James, we are recording, is that right? Thank you, sir. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to our First Commissioners Court of the month of September, the 14th of September, 2020, just after 9:00 a.m. Carrie Harper, welcome. Carrie is here with us, candidate for office. Glad to have you. And we'll begin with item number one, public comments time. This is where you have an opportunity to address the court on any non-agenda items, and then, of course, you may address the court on any agenda items as we get to those. Anyone care to make a comment, statement, question? All right. Mr. Fitch mentioned a number of COVID cases in his opening prayer there. I think this is good. In the last seven days, we've only had 12 new cases. Things definitely are slowing down with cooperation from folks wearing masks and continuing to use good practices. In fact, we didn't have any cases over the weekend, Friday, Saturday, or Sunday. Those 12 occurred between Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday of last week. So that's good news. Item number two, considering possibly approved minutes from our last meeting, three weeks ago, August 24th.
Make a motion we approve it.
Motion to approve that set of minutes is made by Commissioner Parker.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Appelywite. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Joyce, for doing those minutes for us. Item number three, report from commissioners regarding roadwork status. I'll start with Commissioner Riddle, who's telling me about some joint efforts with Luminate to get some old chronic problems fixed.
Well, we've been working on that and patching since we've, and then everybody else is getting kind of cleaned up after the, we got through seal coat, and people are starting, three starting today, and Jimmy started, so we're all hopefully involved with that for the next few weeks, other than just patching all the time.
Precinct two, Commissioner Fitch.
We've been mowing and side cutting, and we had some storm damage on 4210 on a head wall, about an eight-foot culvert there. We rebuilt some of that, and we're going to pave over a place on that as soon as we get off chip sealing, doing some work doing chip sealing. On 2120, we installed a culvert that caved in and dug out a few base failures on that we're going to end up paving over. We've got several more to do on that. On 1070, we dug out some base failures. We're starting to hit some of the bigger ones on that road, and then we'll come back and cover those up. And we did some ditch cleaning on 1070, and we did some paving work on 4520 to get it ready, probably chip seal that in the spring, and then some base failures on 4520.
Thank you.
Chip sealing, got a couple guys out there helping today.
Okay. Precinct three.
Last week, a couple of weeks, we've been working on 1905. We'd like about a mile and a half finishing it, but we're going to stop that, and we're going to chip seal what we have done, about 12 miles, and get it all done before the weather hits in. If we have time, we'll go back to finish 1905 and put a few culverts in and just trying to get caught up before the winter hits here. Like I said, we'll get that chip sealing done, it'll be a lot better.
When is winter going to get here?
I don't know, but I hope it'll wait another 30, 40 days, I hope. But we are, like I said, we're just been mowing, we're side cutting, and just trying to catch up. We finished mowing, but we're going to come back, start back mowing the other, going back where it grew up and everything, so we're going to start back mowing. So get this chip sealing done, we'll start on patching and stuff, major patching and scabbing works. It takes a long time to get this chip sealing and stuff done, it takes time. Been down a man, finally got him back, so.
All right, thank you. Commissioner, precinct four.
We've been, been working on 4315 mostly. We stopped, had to stop and put in a few culverts for some folks, and got my part-time guy, he's been doing, doing side cutting on 4260, and now then he's on 4955 and 4950, trying to get that taken care of, and just as soon as we get to helping Dana with his deal, we're going to get back and try to get the precinct mowed. It's getting, getting pretty wooly out there from all the rain and all we've had, so we trying to, I've had a few calls on it, we're going to try to get started on either the end of this week, first, or next week.
All right, thank you. Item number four, we've got a couple of items here to discuss, and Pam Holmes, our elections administrator, is here. Pam, if you would, come up to the podium. We'll deal with item number four first, and that's to consider and possibly approve the election of some precinct judges and alternate judges, and the appointment of the signature verification committee for the November 3rd general election.
Yes, sir. I handed you all a piece of paper with some judges' names and alternates on them, so I'm going to be reading down through the list. These are, as they were given to me by the party chairs. All but three of our precincts, they'll be having a presiding judge that's from the Republican Party. And so let me go through the Democrats first. They have presiding judges in precincts 1, 8, and 17, and so those presiding judges for number one, Bruce Oco, presiding judge for number eight, Donna Norman, presiding judge for number 17, Mary Castorania. And then alternates for precinct two, Helen Rockwell, three, Betty Russell, four, Bridget Minner, five, Deborah Mears, six, Janice Chisholm, seven, Katera Hines, nine, Shirley Carruthers, 10, Gail Hill, 11, Rosemary Banda, 12, Ted Minter, 14, Sylvia Morales, 15, Bobby White, 16, Wayland Payne, 18, Jeanetta Hargrave, 19, Betty Nels, and 20, Bobby Williams. And then the alternate judge for early voting would be Sylvia Morales, and for the early voting ballot board, that was determined in election board meetings the other day, and that will be Allee Lindsay. And then moving on to the Republicans. So the alternate judge in precincts 1, 8, and 17 will be Tony Giacino for one. For number eight, alternate judge would be Neta Walker, and number 17, alternate judge will be Linda Cepeda. So precinct, presiding judge for number two, Karen Gatherer, number three, Jenny Solomon, number four, Tim Blair, number five, Tammy Case, number six, Janice Brooks, number seven, Lori Stringham, number nine, Cindy Harrison, number 10, Gary Oliver, number 11, Robin Harris, number 12, Beverly Henson, number 14, Paula Dial, number 15, Diane Owens, number 16, Phyllis Welch, number 18, Shirley Cowles, number 19, Rhonda Kittle, and number 20, Frank Stringham. The early voting presiding judge is going to be Paula Dial, and the early ballot board presiding judge, which was determined in election board meetings the other day, would be Emily Aitken. So if y'all approve of that, we can move forward.
Any questions, comments for Pam? Otherwise, you understand she needs your approval on these.
Make a motion to approve it.
Motion for approval made by Commissioner Fitch.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Riddle. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Pam.
The second portion of number four for the signature verification committee. I have had the Democrats submitted names of Mark Lesher and Rhonda Lesher for the two on the signature verification committee, and the Republicans submitted a list of five. We only need three. I proposed Diane Owens, Linda Norris, and Rodney Glenn. The other two are Kathy Brown and Chris Grota as alternates or backups if we needed them. So if that's...
Signature verification committee.
Signature verification.
Five person.
Five persons are needed.
Okay. Need approval on that.
Make a motion to approve it.
Motion, Commissioner Fitch, second Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anything else related to item four, Pam?
That should be it.
Okay, item number five, tell us about your desired building project over there at the Voter Administration Building.
I'm proposing opening up an interior wall there between the foyer and my office. It's a kind of a, maybe a 10-foot wall there, and the reason why I'd like to do that is because with our six-foot social distancing requirement for the COVID, we just don't have enough room to conduct early voting in our area over there. So if we did that, open that up and had the reception area contained to, to check in the voter area contained in that little foyer, then the whole other two rooms could be, the voter booths could be spread out in those other two rooms to accommodate the large number of voters that I think we're going to have. So that's why I would like to do it. And then, because it is COVID-related, I checked with the Secretary of State to see if we could use our funds that have been allocated for COVID-related expenses to see if that would be an eligible expense for that. And I gave you, maybe I didn't, let me just read you the email. The Elections Admin, this is me, the Elections Administration Office in adjoining area, not large, is the early voting location for Ties County. I'm proposing to submit the expenditure of having a six-foot window with a riding area countertop installed in an existing interior wall located in the foyer of the Elections Administration Office. The other side of the wall is my office space, which would be temporarily partitioned off during the early voting period. The purpose for the window is to create a reception type area for the sole purpose of voter check-in. The poll workers would actually be seated in what is now my office, but it would create a clear flow of voters during the check-in process, and more to the point, it would free up space to accommodate the social distancing standard being required due to COVID-19. It would also eliminate the need to purchase plexiglass shields for the check-in tables. Then also, I would need to purchase two bar height stools to complete the area. Believe me, this is the only reason I'm considering this installation, because it does, it encroaches into my office, but it seems like a small thing to do for the greater good. So their response to me was, I presented your proposal to my manager, Don Glotzer. He said the proposed expenditure would be eligible under the CARES Act grant as long as it's not a capital improvement to the property. If it increases the value or useful life of the space, it would fall under another set of rules that would require federal approval. So they are giving their approval to pay for it out of the CARES Act grant funds as long as it doesn't increase the value. I don't believe that reception area window would increase the value, nor do I believe it would decrease the value. It would make it more usable for our purposes.
Okay, so I'm picturing when you come into your area off of the hallway.
Yes.
You have a small room that I used to call kind of the vestibule or the greeting room, and your office is immediately to the left of that.
That's right.
There's a solid wall, and then the door to your office.
Mm-hmm.
So you're talking about cutting a six-foot opening. How high up off the floor would the bottom of that opening be?
It would be, it would be somewhat similar to a teller area at the bank, so it would be a stand-up reception window, and so the window itself would be a six-foot by three-foot high. There would be tempered glass, just like in the other reception areas in my office. It's a tempered glass with a four-inch opening at the bottom as a pass-through.
What would be, what else besides the window, you said like a shelf on the vestibule side? Did you say that, or did I dream that?
It's a, well, there's a piece of granite that would be, an 18-inch piece of granite that would be set in the seal, and that would serve as an area that you could sign your name, that voter could sign their name on the, on the ticket that comes out.
Okay. What about on the inside? Any need for shelf, or table, or whatever for your...
I believe that 18 inches divided with the glass would give ample space on each side.
Do they, what kind of equipment do they have on the inside?
They have the pole pad, which is a, it's an iPad on a stand, and then a small printer about this big.
One of those?
There would, there would be two sets of that.
Two sets, okay. So will your people be sitting or standing?
They would be sitting in a teller-type stool.
Okay.
So a tall chair.
Okay, so an opening with an 18-inch shelf that kind of shares both sides.
Mm-hmm.
Any ideas what that'll cost?
Yes, I did obtain two estimates to that effect, and this estimate is from Browns Glass and Mirror, and they would do the entire project. It's a six-foot by three-foot high, cut the hole in the wall, and an 18-inch by 17-inch granite seal, and one piece of quarter-inch clear tempered safety glass with a four-inch opening all the way across the bottom, and the granite would have supports underneath it. The casement wood and trim would be stained and sealed to match our existing woodwork in the office. And there is an electrical plug that would be directly under that window. I don't know if that comes from the ceiling or if it's around the bottom. If it's around the bottom, we wouldn't have to reroute anything, but if it comes from the ceiling, they would reroute the electrical at the new opening. That is a total of $2,417. And the other one is from Buck Jones. He gave an estimate for the opening of six-foot by three, wood trim and casing, paint and stain, a counter, a granite counter of 72 inches by 18 inches, and his estimate to do that work would be $2,200. And then a separate estimate for the glass is two, from Taylor Glass and Mirror, $263 to bring that total to be $2,463. So they're really close. I think it's a difference of about $50.
Can both of them guarantee you completion by your date?
I would make that a stipulation, and we have talked about that.
All right. Well, I would suggest that maybe whichever we approve is going to be paid for out of your grant funds. You just get with the two of them and decide who can guarantee you with most certainty, because you need that thing in a month.
That's right.
Okay. Gentlemen, what do you think?
Sounds good to me.
I would, I would second it if it's made in.
You want to make that a motion?
Just make a motion, we can get that done.
Motion and a second. After that's done, to give you some privacy, returned to your office, could you then maybe put blinds in there or something like that?
That was what I was thinking, yes, sir.
Would that be something that would have a single time use during this year of COVID, or would that maybe be a setup for the future?
I would think that we could continue to use it, the necessity of it this year is because of COVID.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions, anyone? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, Pam. Anything else?
I do for me.
Okay, item number six, considering possibly approved entering into negotiations with H.W. Lochner, represented by Gary Luba, for right-of-way acquisition services related to the Chapel Hill widening project, FM 1735. Let me kind of break this down into bits and pieces. First of all, we have been waiting many years, probably approaching 16 years since we first borrowed money and set it aside for the Chapel Hill project. It's been, I guess, three years since we looked at some engineered drawings for that project out at Chapel Hill when we had a public meeting. We've continued to wait and wait. Looks like we have finally been given the approval to go ahead and begin the right-of-way acquisition process. We have about $3.6 something million in the bank. We have paid off that debt last year. We believe that based on the estimates by Tech Dot that we can acquire right-of-way and relocate utilities for somewhere in the $2.5 million range. Now, the bad news is, in order to get that right-of-way purchased, just like we did with the Loop, just like we did with Harts Bluff, there are very specific regulations that we must follow in the acquisition of said right-of-way. We have 29 separate pieces in this project, so it is a fairly substantial project compared to the, compared to the Harts Bluff project anyway, not in comparison to the Loop project. In my informal discussion with someone in this business, namely Mark Heidecker, who you'll recall helped in this process along with Pate Transportation back when we did the Loop, you'll remember that he is all, he is in this business. His company is called Property Acquisition Services. He estimated this, you're not going to believe me, what it was going to take to hire somebody to go through the appraisal process, the negotiations, the purchase, potential settlements if you have to go to, you know, to force somebody to sell their land. We hope that's not going to be the case here. He estimated that project to be in the million-dollar-plus range to get this done. And I originally had asked Deanne with Tech Dot, Atlanta, is this a project that commissioners and myself could go out and negotiate with landowners to purchase their property? Oh, no, you've got regulations that you've got to go by that's very specific. So that's how it was done, you know, many years ago, but no longer. She said, just like we at Tech Dot do, we rely upon companies such as Property Acquisition Services, H.W. Lochner. We dealt with HALFF back in 2000, when was that, James, 13? 2012 and 13, when we redid the Harts Bluff Road, we used a company called HALFF, H-A-L-F-F. One of the executives there was this Gary Luba that I am mentioning here in this agenda item. Two or three years ago, Gary made a change from HALFF to H.W. Lochner, a company that does essentially the same type services, and so we have a relationship with him. We have other companies that do the same thing, that Tech Dot can provide us a list. She said there was about a dozen that they use statewide when they have to purchase right-of-way. This would be a selection process. Typically, if you did not have a relationship with somebody, you would go out for a request for qualifications, not a bid process for professional services, but you would interview different companies based on their qualifications to do the job. Much like an engineering project, if you were building a new building, let's say we were getting ready to build a new justice center over across the street, if that ever comes to pass and you want to hire a planning and architectural firm, you would go through the request for qualifications process and decide who had the skill set that you needed to do this job. Here we have a little bit different situation in that this is a fairly standard process. We have a relationship with Gary Luba. We don't have a relationship with Lochner, per se. We had a good experience with Gary Luba, and so therefore, my suggested solution, but we certainly don't have to do this, is that we put together a committee, and I'm going to suggest a couple of commissioners and possibly one more, possibly Barbara, to be a committee that would negotiate the price to do this job after we make a selection of the company that's going to do it. So again, this is not a bid process where you put this out and you have people give you a bid. For one thing, there is no guaranteed level of work that's going to be required. Some of these parcels may be easily purchased, some may require more in-depth negotiation, some may ultimately go to condemnation, so we don't know exactly how much work there's going to be, but dealing with one of these companies, they will give you a fee schedule, and they will tell you, if we accomplish this, our price is this, if we have to go to step two, it's this, step three, it's this. And so based on the number of parcels, they can give you a pretty good idea where this project will end up. This is according to Deanne with Tech Dot, and in my conversation years ago with Gary Luba, and with Mark Heidecker. So I can't tell you what it's going to cost. I've told you what, you know, one person's estimate of this was, and it sounds, seems to me like we're going to spend more money on the right-of-way acquisition process, and you're actually going to pay for the land that you're seeking to buy, as strange as that seems. So we can go in any direction that you want. I personally would like to get this project going as quickly as possible. Another good bit of information we've got, in addition to the, so let's just say that we took $1 million to pay for the service of acquiring that right-of-way. I'm certainly hoping we can get it done for substantially less than that. Let's say that we have $2.5 million according to the estimate of Tech Dot, let's say another million dollars to pay for the services of a right-of-way consultant. You're at 3.5. We've got about 3.6 in the bank, but if you will recall, and I haven't discussed this in, now it's been nearly two years, we were awarded $320,000 by NET RMA, Northeast Texas Regional Mobility Authority, which we are a member of, and Nate Preeford is our representative on that entity. It used to be Hudson Old years before that, and we are coming up on the two-year anniversary of when we were awarded that money. That's a project that I applied for three different times, and we finally got awarded that money. We have... We have until April of next year to spend that money, or we'll have to go out for, we'll have to ask them for an extension. But I believe that we can get started in acquiring this right-of-way, and that is what that award from NET RMA was for, was for the purchase of right-of-way and utility relocation. So that gives us 3.6 plus another 320,000 puts you at, you know, 3.9 million. We should have enough money to pay for all the different things that go along with this Chapel Hill widening project that we are responsible for, that being utility relocation and right-of-way acquisition. Tech Dot will provide the actual roadwork and management once that right-of-way is acquired. So, all that said, I'm giving you simply one option here, telling you who the players would be, Gary Louba that we worked with back seven years ago, the name of his current company, H.W. Lochner, of where he is a principal executive. But, again, if you want to go through the request for qualifications process, which is not a bid process, we can do that if for some reason that you want to see, you want to meet some other people besides Gary Louba.
Well, I happened to be here. It had already been approved to hire Half to do the job. I was brand-new on the job, and I didn't quite understand what Louba, and I have an email or where that you, I questioned how much he had charged us and what he was charging us for, and you sent an email to Mr. Louba asking him to explain it. And at that time, we were at $95,000. They had billed us for and paid them, which is, that was a one-mile thing, and a very few, and Dr. McKeller gave us most of the land. We had to move his fence back and some things like that, and move one house back and tear it down. But anyway, we went through all that, and then I thought, I don't know this for a fact, that those same companies dealt with the utilities. And in your numbers here, 3.9, you didn't, you didn't move. If I understand it correctly, Tech Dot said, we'll widen those roads at Hart's Bluff thing. If you'll pay for the, buying the land or whatever it is and clear the right-of-way, and we will build the road and move the utilities. And so the utilities alone on Hart's Bluff was like one mile or less. The water company charged us $495,000, that's a half-million. So, and then I don't remember the details. The phone company didn't charge us anything because they were in the process of putting a new system in, a new line, so we lucked out there because they, they didn't charge anything. The city charged us something for the sewer. I don't remember the details, but I, they, I did all of the work with the lady from Tech Dot, Shirley, I don't remember her last name, and her secretary, Ms. Carolyn, and then they, they did most of the work with each utility. We dealt with them individually. I understand these companies like Half, and they, they do that too. But we, it wasn't a big job for me because I didn't do a lot. The lady at Tech Dot Atlanta and Carolyn, I guess, did most of the work, and then, or I guess, helped my hand while, while we got it all done. But it was quite a bit of money. It was like three-quarters of a million dollars. I wish we could, I mean, I don't, I don't have, I had the folder, I just recently threw the folder in trash with all that stuff. But there's a, I don't know about using these companies. I can't figure out why in the world he would have those, for that many pieces of property, why he would have a, would charge us $95,000,000. It's almost $100,000. I don't know what he did. And if I understand it correctly, you go get the appraisals, I mean, he does, from the appraisal district, and they have a value, and you probably offer it to those owners of the property what the value, I don't know where you start, but I would assume this is where you start. And then after you, you offer their value, they come back and say, I want more. And we, in two instances, on Hart's Bluff, just for the record, they, they wanted more. It seemed like to me expressed a lot more, extreme, you know, and I don't remember the numbers, we'd say $5,000 for a piece of a lot, the first lot going across the creek. And the guy said, I want $20,000 or $10,000. And Mr. Louba come to the court and told us what the guy wanted. Then he, then he talked, and this is a question, and you may know the answer, we had, said if we had to have a hearing, he compared the cost, if we give the guy more money, or if we had a hearing, or whatever the requirements are for that, would cost more money than to go ahead and give him the money. We were talking small pieces of property, small pieces of land. And we agreed, which was logical in, at that time. And so what happens then? I don't understand how they can charge that much money for their services. And I know that Mr. Louba worked for Tech Dot in Atlanta, and he worked for Tech Dot, so he knows all the stuff, how to get around. But I, I just, I have a hard time understanding the charges that, that they did charge us. As far as the utilities, that's, I don't know what, the water line was their biggest one there. Dr. McKeller gave us the land. I don't think we even paid him for the land to move it back 100 yards or something. We, we did pay for moving his fence, his pasture fence back, so. I would say, that's just for, a lot of questions. What, what do they really charge us for? I mean, if we have a hearing, we have to pay for that. I remember that when it was discussed back then with the Hart's Bluff. So we're talking about, I don't know, five or six miles. I don't guess a million dollars is much different than the prices back then, but I still don't understand why we couldn't do that, hire a local, I mean, I don't know if it's possible legally or not, but I, I don't see anything hiring a local realtor that knows the values of property to do the negotiation, or someone. Just my thoughts.
Well, and those were exactly my thoughts, too. I had all those same questions. Just a couple of points of correction. I did have the auditor's office pull all the payments that we made to Half Associates. It was only $64,000. It wasn't 95. And the girls looked at three-years range there. Total checks paid to Half Associates, 64, just shy of $65,000. The appraisal process is a lot more than just seeing what the appraisal district has it valued for. They may use that as a tool, but there is actually a third-party appraiser that participates in the process. It's not just Louba or another firm that goes and checks that value at the appraisal district. They hire an appraiser who, who is familiar with this type of work, somebody who specializes in it. I can't tell you why they charge that much either, but I would like for you to serve on that committee that makes, that does the price negotiation so that you have a full understanding of that. And I would suggest Jimmy, since it's in his precinct, do the same thing. And you all could see exactly what Gary, or whoever else we go with, charges, so they can give you a full explanation. And if at the end of that negotiation process, you all still feel like, well, Gary, we like you, we think you can do the work, but we think your prices are outrageous, you can say, we're going to scrap that, and we're going to go to the next one. I'm not familiar with this process. I did not take part in it when the Loop work was done. It was all acquired by the time I came into office. And as you said, the Hart's Bluff project was much smaller, simpler, less landowners to deal with. And again, according to Deanne with Tech Dot, she said, you will find that these firms will end up charging you about the same. Some may be higher on one aspect of the job, some may be lower on another one, but our experience is that we know that they're all going to pretty well end up the same. So again, we're not, and, and you, and you can call Deanne herself at Atlanta, or Jeff Lightfoot, no, Mike Lightfoot, and ask them about the process and say, why can't we get a local realtor to do it? Well, for one, I don't think you're going to find a local realtor that's going to want to be the bad guy and negotiate with potential clientele here up and down Chapel Hill Road and get into a situation where, you know, he's negotiating a price and trying to get the commissioners and the landowner to agree. That's a difficult position to be in, and that person can sometimes be the target of criticism. So again, Mike Lightfoot, your head right-of-way acquisitions guy at Tech Dot Atlanta, he can kind of talk to you about the process and why you have to use a firm like Lochner or PAS or Half Associates to do this, and maybe he can tell you why it's so expensive. So, those are all good questions, all valid questions, but unfortunately, I can't give you the answers to all those.
Well, I don't know, but those are just my experiences. Now, the utilities, I don't know about the, in the, in the deal, I guess, in the original deal, we were supposed to, the property plus the, move the utilities, get them out of the way. And I don't know, the water company was the biggest thing we had, because they run the whole length of thing.
You had, you had a big problem there with Tri Water because of the location of that, of their water line. Now, if, if a utility company is using your existing right-of-way, they have to move it at no cost to us. Problem comes in is when you're getting onto land that is not part of your existing right-of-way and asking the utility company to change that location, then you have to pay for them. So that's why you got some of those utilities moved at no cost, and some we had to pay dearly for, like, like with Tri Water. And those questions can be asked during that negotiation process with the firm that you choose. You know, tell us what you would charge to negotiate with the utility companies. I don't know how much they negotiate. They may tell you it's X dollars per, per foot. I don't know. So, a lot of questions still to be answered. This is a suggested starting point. And we're not voting to hire Lochner or Gary Louba. You're voting on whether or not to enter into negotiations that include pricing and description of the work to be done.
Would you advertise that as, like a bid, or other people could?
You don't, you don't have to. You can, you can do that if you choose to do so. But again, what you're going to do is, you're going to end up interviewing multiple companies, and they're going to do nothing more than give you a kind of a description of what kind of work they do and what typical fees might be, but they're not going to negotiate a price with you during that interview process. You have to make the selection before you begin that process.
I'd like more, more people to, than those two, just those two that you mentioned, to discuss with before deciding. That's my opinion.
And, and again, if you choose to negotiate with this bunch and you don't like their pricing, you don't, you're not obligated to them.
Well, you don't have anything to compare with, though. Like I said, the guy at Tech dot said some of them are higher in some areas than the others, and cheaper in other areas, so.
Well, again, I, I would love for you to spend some time talking to Mike Lightfoot and/or Deanne Simmons at Tech Dot Atlanta and asking them about this process. They're not going to say, oh, you really want to go with Lochner, or you really want to go with Half or PAS. They're just going to tell you, we work with all of them, and we wouldn't work with them if we didn't like them and have good experience with them. My, my suggestion here of starting with Lochner is just expedience and, and trying to get this, get this work going rather than taking a, you know, a month to interview multiple Lot to absorb here, but any questions, I'll do my best to answer, or again, encourage you all to have conversations with the same folks that I have been talking with.
Did Tech, Tech Dot Atlanta have a list of certain companies that they use that are approved or something by Tech Dot and work with them or something? So, then like you can put it out for bids, just find people that do it, six or eight companies, wasn't it, maybe?
I think she said 10 or 12, as I, as I recall. And she will be glad to provide you with a, a list of those. They, they will not make recommendations to you?
She also said that they all charge about the same, you know, whoever you work with. Either way, we're going to have to pay, and that may be a little cheaper if things go smooth, which I hope, hope happens.
The, if I, I don't, I don't know this, but when we were talking, because it was already made with the Half before I was on the scene, but do they, the same companies do the moving of the utilities? Because I'm certain that we could get that done, Jimmy could, I'll help him.
I don't believe that they were involved in that.
They weren't involved, but do they offer that service?
I'm sure that they do, but that'll be a question for the negotiation process. I'm sure they'll do as much work as you'll pay them to do.
Yeah, well, we didn't use them at all for the utilities.
And, and maybe you won't have to on this one, hopefully not. I don't, I don't have any idea what, I don't think that the utility relocation price tag on this project, according to Tech Dot, was as large as the Hart's Bluff project, which is good news. Fellas, what would you like to do here? Or if anybody wants to spend some time making some phone calls, you can do that, too.
I'd like to get moving with it and get a hold of Gary Louba and start talking to
I don't have a problem with talking to Lochner and just kind of getting a, a starting point, and if it's way higher than what we think it should be, then we can say, we're going, going to get, you know, some other, other prices and, and see what, what we can do.
Yep, you can do that.
I make a motion that we make, get the, to advertise it, whatever we're talking, we're not talking about bids, but, and get started, see who would respond. And then, but in the meantime, I don't have any objection to talking to Louba or somebody that wants to, somebody that's interested in the job. I'd rather have somebody who wants it rather than somebody who doesn't.
Okay, well, you said two different things. Again, if you want to go out for a request for proposal and see how many of these companies will sit down and then negotiate with you, you can do that. But there, you're not going to bring in five firms and negotiate a price with them and choose the cheapest one. That isn't how this works when you're dealing with professional services. You're going to have to interview them and select one based on their qualifications, say, we are giving you the right to come and talk to us and negotiate for this job. And you tell the other four, thank you very much. And then you sit down and, and negotiate. My assumption is, you're going to find, you're going to talk to five different entities, and you're going to be convinced that all five of them could do this job perfectly well. I'm suggesting you cut that process out, deal with a known quantity in Gary Louba, who we've had a good relationship with, and it, and negotiate with him. And then if you don't like his price, say, gosh, Gary, we like you, but again, we don't like your price. I believe we can cut a month of work out by doing it that way. That's why I'm suggesting it. But, commi- But Commissioner Riddle has made a motion here, I think, if you'll restate that for clarification.
That we advertise it for, for not bid or whatever you call it, proposal?
No, it's not, it's not for a bid. You can't advertise for bids.
I know, I realize. What did you, what did you?
Well, you can do a request for qualifications, where you could send out a letter to every single firm that Tech dot works with and says, we'd like to meet with you and hear your qualifications for a project like the Chapel Hill Road.
And they won't give you any price or anything at that time. All they're going to do is take you their qualifications, and, you know, we can do this, and we're willing to do this, and then you're right back to where, if we take this one now and we like what they're saying, then we can go ahead and move on with it then from there.
I'm curious as how many people would be interested, would want the work. I'm sure.
A project of this size, I would bet everyone that you requested to submit would be interested. I mean, if we're talking about something of this kind of, you know, a high six-figure job, potentially seven figures, you're going to have a lot of interest.
I withdraw that motion.
There's nothing wrong with that motion.
No, I just, my thoughts.
Again, if you all need another couple of weeks to talk with anybody you want to talk with at Tech dot, or?
I would like to do that myself and bring it back at the next meeting.
Okay.
That's what I'd like to do.
Okay. And just to kind of give us all each an idea, who, what sources of information would you like for me to provide for you as far as people to talk with? I'd start with Mike Lightfoot. I'd start with Deanne Simmons. Beyond that, I don't really know unless you actually talk to one of these firms. I mean, you could call Gary Luba, I guess, or Mark Heidecker that worked on the, but again, these people are trying to get your business, and I'm not sure that you're going to get an unbiased opinion from them.
Yeah. I would like to talk to Tech dot to start off with and see what they give me and then go from there.
Okay. A week from today, we'll have our budget and tax rate hearing and make a decision. We might, could even put this same item on that agenda and cut out another week of waiting, if you could do that over the next seven days.
Yes, sir.
All right. How does that sound?
It sounds good.
And any of the rest of you that want to be involved in that conversation? I'm sure Jimmy could get you on speakerphone with himself, and two of you at a time could listen to a conversation with Mike Lightfoot or Deanne. Okay, well, why don't we, why don't we table this with a motion?
I'm not good.
We're going to table item number six. Mr. Parker makes that motion.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fitch. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, nothing wrong with spending some time on a decision of that magnitude. Item number seven, consider and possibly approve the purchase of some radio advertising with East Texas Broadcasting to promote participation in the census, to be shared equally with the city of Mount Pleasant in an amount not to exceed $1,800 for the county's half. The package that East Texas Broadcasting has presented to me, that I have shared with Ed Thatcher at the city and with their PR firm, with it consists of a husband-wife team, Mark and Suzanne Brooke, they've come up with a package with the radio station of about $2,400, which split would be more like $1,200. I've added on some money there in case there ends up being some production costs that need to be paid to the city's PR firm. I'm just guessing there. They may not charge us, they may charge us. They've already done some free production for a couple of Facebook videos that I did with them, that they're going to utilize on the city's website, as well as they've given it to me to share it on my Facebook page. And it's a well-done video with audio in my voice, appealing to the Latino community to participate in the census. I thought it would be a good idea to not advertise on the normal English channel, but on the Latino channel that is a sister station with East Texas Broadcasting, just to target that audience, to encourage their participation. And since we are heavily populated percentage-wise by the Latino community, and because I have had conversations with two individuals that have contacted me from the Latino community and said, hey, here's the obstacles you're dealing with. We don't trust the census. We think it might be used against us, you know, for deportation, et cetera. And I think that it's important that they understand what's the purpose of the census and that it's not going to be used to harm them in any way. And I've done what I can do with my Facebook page, but I'm thinking hitting them pretty hard on the Latino radio station with this same message would be a good thing. And I'd like to see us kick in some money. We've got to get our percentage of cooperation with the census up so that we get everybody counted, so that we get monies and state and federal representation that we need. So I don't think we'll spend $1,800. It's going to be somewhere between $1,200 and $1,800, hopefully a little closer to $1,200.
I'll make a motion. We do it.
All right, motion to approve, Commissioner Parker.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Item eight, consider and possibly approve a contractual agreement with Appris Inc., the vendor that provides the statewide automated victim notification services, SAVNS, Savins. We refer to this as the Savins Grant that we get each year, and as part of that grant process, there is a third-party entity, Appris Inc., that actually is responsible for those automated victim notification services. In other words, the county is not the one who calls the victims to warn them that their ex-husband is now out of jail. That's kind of what the Savins Grant does, is it notifies in advance two victims of family violence, assault, et cetera, that the person in question that they probably are scared of has been released from prison. That's kind of oversimplifying the purpose of the Savins Grant money. But Appris is the company that actually makes those communications with these victims. And as part of our process and taking the grant money, we have to approve going into a contractual relationship with Appris. We have done this before on an annual basis.
I'll make a motion.
Motion, who made that motion? Commissioner Applewhite makes the motion.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Fitch. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Consider and possibly approve the audit proposal for the 2019 and 2020 fiscal year that's getting ready to end here in a couple of more weeks. And we have a proposal from Arnold Walker Arnold. As you'll recall, I guess three, four years ago, they gave us a three-year proposal and had defined what those amounts would be over those three years. And in my discussions with Lanny Walker, he says, we're not doing that anymore. Things are changing so rapidly and dramatically in our world that we never know what new requirements are going to be dumped on us in order to properly complete an audit for a municipality or for a county or school. And therefore, we are no longer doing any more than one-year commitments on this. So I know Fitch asked me to talk to them about getting a three-year proposal. They said, no, we're going to pass. We're going to give you one year. And you can read their long, seven-page, highly-technical memo if you would like, but the bottom line is our fee for services for this year, should you choose to use us. $34,100 for the audit of the county and an additional $3,000 for the audit of the juvenile probation department. And that's up slightly over last year. Barbara, about $33,000 maybe last year. Does that sound about right? So they are pretty consistent with their price increases, and that keeps up with cost of living, as well as the additional regulations that come down from the feds and the state. Now, again, you're not forced to use Arnold Walker and Arnold, but years ago, we did attempt to get some additional interest from out-of-town firms, and that's really the only choice you've got because there's nobody else willing to do this. Carl's firm was the only one that did it before, but he couldn't participate in that for obvious reasons, and he's not going to be interested in doing this. So locally, the biggest bang for the buck's going to be Arnold Walker and Arnold. And if you're comfortable with them, again, for a one-year commitment, $34,100 plus $3,000.
I'll make a motion. We approve it.
Motion, Commissioner Fitch.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, item number 10. This is an annual task that we have. This is not something to be voted on by the court. This is simply a part of our responsibility, and that is to record the auditor's office and court reporter's salaries in the county clerk's minutes. These are figures that are derived and determined by the district judges, and we are going to record those in our minutes as per state law. Anything you want to add to that, Barbara? Let me go through some of these. Okay, I've got multiple orders. I won't read all the words here, but I'll tell you the position and the salary. It's hereby ordered that effective October 1, 2020, so this will begin our new fiscal year. The salary of the auditor of Titus County is hereby fixed at $61,000 annually. The first assistant auditor, fixed at $47,198 annually. The second assistant auditor, $40,406 annually. And the third assistant auditor, fixed at $31,665. So that would take care of Barbara and her three employees in the auditor's office. Moving on to the court reporter, which is a position we don't deal with over here in county court, but the district judges rely heavily on a court reporter to document all of their proceedings. The official court reporter of the 76th Judicial District, Krista LeFever, is presently drawing a salary of $66,344, and they are proposing an increase of $1,326 per year, making that salary $67,671 or $5,600 per month, and that is split between Kent, Morris County. We pay a little bit over half of that, $2,988 of that $5,639. We have another court reporter, the backup court reporter, Linda Carroll, and the exact same figures there, except for the fact when it's broken down into four participating counties in the 276th District, as opposed to only three in the 76th, that makes Titus County share $2,481 compared to $2,988 for the 76th. So I have read all of those. Again, it's not whether we like it or don't like it. We are here just to acknowledge those and to get them into our court minutes. Let the records reflect in your minutes, Joyce, that we have done that. Okay, we'll go back to the agenda. Item number 11, consider and possibly approve opting out of the federal payroll tax deferral program. And I'm going to defer to our resident auditor to explain to you why we would want to opt out of something that sounds so good on the surface. Fitch, can you hand her that microphone, please, sir?
President Trump, on August 8th, ordered the U.S. Department of Treasury to set aside to make the possibility of deferring some payroll taxes. It's the FICA portion of the payroll tax, the 6.2% that currently is paid by both the employee and the employer. Mind you, this is a deferral. That's where we would not take it out of the employee's payroll check until January. Now, what TAC recommends is that we don't do that because if an employee were to leave, then we would have to have a method in place to collect that money back. Their other concern, that they recently updated, and I got something from Higginbotham that also agrees with TAC, states that, you know, it might help an employee right now, but it's going to reduce their pay next year in January. And that's the biggest concern. So the recommendation from TAC is that we don't do that. Most counties are not doing it. Higginbotham just provided the additional information. And I'll read you this last paragraph here. Employers will need to evaluate whether their employees will benefit in the short term or be harmed in the long term by these deferrals. It's possible they could be forgiven, but there's not any information on that yet. The additional amount being collected during repayment will result in lower net pay next year, which may create more financial stress than any benefit that the deferral may provide. So my recommendation to you is that we opt out of this.
If an entity didn't opt out, they decided to go with this, you defer it, how does it get paid back? In one lump chunk or?
There's not any, there's not anything for us to tell you because they've not made the decision yet. But if we do that, then every employee of the county is going to have to sign an authorization, authorizing us to take that back without me being able to tell them how that would really look. Would it be all at one time? Would it be over the course? But the bottom line is this, if we do this and we don't take the money out, they leave us or we don't have them sign that form, then the county is on the hook to pay that.
Good. Clear as mud. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so TAC recommends against it. I don't want to be surprised in January, when Barbara says, oh, you owe me X number of dollars here for that money that we let you keep in your check. So instead of you having that automatically deducted out of your check, if we were to opt into this, your paycheck would go up temporarily, but then they might have to, you might have to give it back at a time when you weren't prepared to give it back. So I guess that's their rationale for not doing that.
Do we need a motion to opt out?
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
Motion to opt out, made by Commissioner Riddle.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, give me one second here. I've got to get David, hey, I've got to get David Holmes' phone number to somebody here. They're trying to get on the roof, so bear with me just a second. Well, I'm going to give her David's number because she doesn't know who to contact right now, and they're not here yet. And they're, they're not here yet. Okay. Item 12 is approve oral and written reports, which you have been provided. Motion for approval is made by Commissioner Fitch.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then item 13 is your treasurer's report for approval.
Make that motion.
Motion to approve, Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Fitch. All in favor, say aye. All right, here's these for your signatures. Item 14, budget amendments. None today. None? Load us up. All right. Item 15, signed pay orders and approved bill payments.
Make motion to approve the bill.
Motion to approve, Commissioner Parker.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Fitch. All in favor, say aye. Closing comments. Again, Civic Center, free COVID testing every day except Sunday, Monday through Saturday, nine to four. They will have to stop early tomorrow, Tuesday, because of meetings of city meetings up there, so they'll shut down at 2:00. That's only for tomorrow. But otherwise, take advantage of those, anybody that you know. Free testing, no symptoms required. The number of people that we are testing is going down each day. That's the good news. I've invited all of our neighboring counties to come. Of all the tests we've given, which now is well over 3,000 tests, less than half of those are Titus County people. Through the end of August, we had given 1,366 Titus County people a test. Only 37 were positive. That's good. So again, the number of people needing testing going down, the number of confirmed cases going down, going in the right direction, at least for now. Hopefully it stays that way. Flu shot time for county employees and their family members, if so covered. You'll see this sign posted for Thursday, the 17th, this week, 8:30 to 11:00. And now, more than ever, our doctors in hospital is encouraging everyone to be smart and get a flu shot. It will not give you the flu. It will help keep you well. Free for Titus County employees and covered dependents. Non-covered spouses pay $30. Must be age seven and up to receive a shot. Thurmans will be helping us administer these. Once again, wear a mask. You will not get a shot without a mask. 8:30 to 11:00, Annex Break Room. We'll see you back a week from today and we'll vote, hopefully again, on what direction to go with, with picking out a right-of-way consultant, as well as discuss and have a public hearing for our budget and tax rate. That's all I have. Commissioner Fitch? Mr. Parker? Commissioner Applewhite?
Nothing.
Commissioner Riddle? All right, 10:15. Thank you, everyone, for your attendance. Have a good day.
Make a motion. Make a motion with Jerry.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Applewhite and Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Have a good day.
When was that flu shot?
Thank you, ladies.